We don't want to put a bunch of positions in and just have money sitting there that we can't utilize. I'd rather be a little bit more conservative and then come to you with budget amendment or move some money around if need be. Second is, or last thing, organizational wide, looking at five, five point two percent COLA. There is math behind that and a two percent merit. We did one percent merit this year. I think that moves us more towards a performance based organization on set good goals. And if you accomplish those goals over the next year, then here's what you're looking for in terms of merit bonus. Look at merit increases if you're interested in that. But long term, that inflates your liability from a salary standpoint. So I, previous positions, we would do merit one year, bonuses the next year, and we would alternate to kind of keep that liability down. So we can talk about that more. For the COLA, you've got a three point two for social security that's going in January. I typically use the previous years for that year's social security increase for, for COLA. So in January, they're estimating it to three point two. Previously, you did seven point five and five, but social security did five point nine and eight point seven. So that puts you about two point one percent behind over the last two years. So I figured let's add that on top of three point two, or three point one. Yeah, three point two, sorry. It's just about five point two, five point three percent for COLA.
Anyone has any comments or anything?
I do. I like the idea of affordable housing, definitely.
Very, very important.
In terms of price. Very important. And the personnel, very important. The highway fifteen five oh one widening, I would be interested in knowing what they are unable to pay for. We may have to change some of the plans with that widening project, I'm not sure. So those are, I do like the direction that the, that you're going in reference to compensation. I'm very, very, very interested in helping to be compensated at a higher rate. And especially the police department for sure, because I'm not sure whether we need additional police officers. I know you'll present that to us at a later time. But I am definitely interested in giving everyone as much of an increase as possible so that we can retain staff and they don't go to other places. So it was interesting to know that Sanford starts at sixty two for police officers, which we're, which I'm very, very surprised at.
Yeah, I, I think they're going to be our new competitor in the region when it comes to how much they're paying. They just, they just did their salary study and so I'm still waiting to get a copy of that so we can take a look at it.
Okay.
But the CAG pretty much told me that's your, that's who you need to be looking at if you're looking for comparative data.
Okay. I do have one question. The front, I know that you all are thinking about moving into the other building now in reference, and it's not about the budget, but the individual that takes the payments, will she be moving as well? How are you going to do that? Is it going to be someone there to take the payments or not anymore?
So that has changed a couple of times.
Because we thought we had plenty of offices and then we didn't, and then, so we've been going back and forth. But the expectation is to continue to have someone to take.
Payments until Sanford takes over.
Okay.
I think, and I know that was kind of a point when we were talking about the murder. I think eventually though, I would say municipal billing is going to go more towards how you pay your utility bill or your gas bill. On your phone, you do it on your computer. And I know a lot of cities that have already done that. They, they used COVID as an opportunity to get rid of their, their customer service department. I don't think we're ready to do that yet. I know Heather's not ready to do that. Nor am I, quite frankly, but I think long term, that's something we probably got to come to terms with. That ultimately, you'll probably get a bill via an email or even if you get it in the mail, you'll likely just pay on your phone or on your computer, long term.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Take a general snapshot and say this is what we should be because we have to look to the east. That's where our competition is. Of course, and to the south, because uh. Police recently did a salary study for me and the highest paid starting out at Sanford. I want to say it's sixty two thousand. So I think we're at fifty two, change forty nine to fifty two depending. So we've we've got some different. Ways we can give increases for education, certificates, experience, et cetera. So we want to really memorialize some more of those and put them and put them down on paper. Yep, so we're 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 a little short. Luckily, in the last six months, we've made some some good jumps at the police department to get them. More where they need to be, so that way compressions and so that. But I think on average, probably about five short each position. Of course, some are ten, some are one, so have to just adjustments. Uh, that's that's top of my list. Engineering, I think some of those positions are are not where they need to be to recruit good talent. That became very clear this morning and. Employee with NC State who manages a internship program with the engineering department. And I told her how much we were paying starting out if she left. And uh, that I think that was a clear sign that we gotta we gotta bump those numbers up if we're gonna recruit good engineering staff. We've had one position open for how long?
August.
Yep, and really no, really no bites. I mean, we had a couple of people fly, but. They weren't anybody we wanted to hire. Also, public works, those are some of our lowest paid. In terms of providing a livable wage, I think those are positions that. They're just, I mean, obviously, they're important. Uh, we want to make sure those are getting paid a healthy wage. Staffing, not gonna. We don't know, Heather and I don't know what departments are gonna be asking for staff. I'm also hesitant to put more positions in departments that already have openings. I don't think that's a good use of resources. But I would ask that you keep in mind as we go through the budget process and as we go through next year, please be. Let's look at staffing uh, be flexible. If just because the position isn't in the budget, um, just know I may come to you in in October and say, I need this position. So I don't want to put a bunch of positions in and just have money sitting there that we can't utilize. I'd rather be a little bit more conservative and then come to you with budget amendment or move some money around if need be. Uh, second is, or last thing, organizational wide, looking at five, five point two percent COLA. There is math behind that and a two percent merit. We did one percent merit this year. Uh, I think that moves us more towards a performance-based organization on. Set good goals, and if you accomplish those goals over the next year, then here's what you're looking for in terms of merit bonus. Look at merit increases, if you're interested in that. But long term, that inflates uh, your liability from a salary standpoint. So I, previous positions, we would do merit one year, bonuses the next year, and we would alternate to kind of keep that liability down. So we can talk about that more. For the COLA, you've got a three point two for social security that's going in January. I typically use the previous years for that year's uh, social security increase for for COLA. So in January, they're estimating it at three point two. Previously, you did seven point five and five, but social security did five point nine and eight point seven. So that puts you about two point one percent behind over the last two years. So I figured let's add that on top of three point two uh, or three point one. Yeah, three point two, sorry. It's just about five point two, five point three percent for COLA.
Anyone has any comments or anything? I do. I like the idea of affordable housing, definitely.
Very, very important.
Terms of price. Very important. And uh, the personnel, very important. The highway fifteen five oh one widening, I would be interested in knowing what they are unable to pay for. We may have to change some of the plans with that widening project, I'm not sure. So those are, I do like the direction that the that you're going in reference to compensation. I'm very, very, very interested in helping to be compensated at a higher rate. And especially the police department for sure, because I'm not sure whether we need additional police officers. I know you'll present that to us at a later time. But I am definitely interested in giving everyone. As much of an increase as possible so that we can retain staff and they don't go to other places. So it was interesting to know that Sanford starts at sixty two for police officers, which we're, which I'm very, very surprised at.
Yeah, I I think they're gonna be our new competitor in the region when it comes to how much they're paying. They just, they just did their salary study, and so I'm still waiting to get a copy of that so we can take a look at it.
Okay.
Uh, but the CAG pretty much told me that's your, that's who you need to be looking at if you're looking for uh, comparative data.
Okay. I do have one question. The front, I know that you all are thinking about moving into the other building. Now, in reference, and it's not about the budget, but the individual that takes the payments, will she be moving as well? How are you going to do that? Is it going to be someone there to take the payments or not anymore?
So that has changed a couple of times. Because we thought we had plenty of offices and then we didn't, and then, so we've been going back and forth. But the expectation is to continue to have someone to take. Payments until Sanford takes over.
Okay.
I think, and I know that was kind of a point when we were talking about the murder. I think eventually though. I would say municipal billing is gonna go more towards how you pay your utility bill or your gas bill. On your phone, you do it on your computer. And I know a lot of cities that have already done that. They they used COVID as an opportunity to get rid of their their customer service department. I don't think we're ready to do that yet. I know Heather's not ready to do that. Nor am I, quite frankly, but. I think, long term, that's something we probably gotta come to terms with. That ultimately, you'll probably get a bill via an email, or even if you get it in the mail, you'll likely just pay on your phone or on your computer, long term.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think for for comments on that, like employee heading is critical.
Of course, but I also want to make sure that we keep pushing on other employee benefits and. Whatever those are, we keep.
Being ahead of others in in that area too, and just being good for our employees.
Yeah, you you've got a couple of changes coming on Monday. Uh, accrual time and then giving people credit for accrual time. Uh, for instance, can I use an example? Twenty seven years of experience, twenty nine, and he's getting credit for in Pittsburgh for like two. So he's getting the same amount of hours of vacation that I am, and he's got fourteen years more experience. So I'd like to right that wrong, because some employees that came in. Put it in their contract, or it was offered to them. If you come here, I'll 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 count your time. Others were not given that option. So I want to write that wrong and and get everybody on the same page. And then add that to our personnel policy, so that way, if you're coming from a different state or local organization. Your time will count. Uh, it will not count towards health insurance. That's a liability that we cannot afford. And probably shouldn't, right? Anyway, but the the benefit changes. Tori's like one. So, but no, I will continue to bring benefit changes to you probably quarterly as we see things that we can work through. Uh, I recently did a person to Sanford Holly Springs and Carboro, I believe. And nope. Okay, Sanford Holly Springs and Carboro, and we had the best benefits in about half the categories. And we weren't far behind in the rest. So uh, and then Colby did us a comparison to, let's see, was it Gilbert County? Gilbert County, we're pretty close too. And once, what if you pass the accrual rates that we're gonna suggest on Monday, then uh, we'll be, we'll be right up with Sanford and Gilbert County and others. We'll we'll keep those things coming.
That's kind of the same um. Options that we pursue Sanford to do with our long-term employees, you know, make sure that their service county going to Sanford also.
Yes, we did.
We need to do that.
And I think we asked them to count it to health contracts too. Cause they, they're one of the few that have brought back, if you do thirty years of service with the city, they'll pay your health insurance until you're till you're dead. That that used to be a thing. It went away after oh eight, oh nine to save money, and now the place is starting to bring it back to help uh, with. I'm gonna be considered, but not not district. I don't think.
Any additional comments?
I have quite a few other comments generally, but not of.
Y'all, feel free to.
Do your. I just mentioned um. A big supporter of the uh, merit raise, so uh, don't have any time, any issue to anybody that goes above and beyond to receive a merit raise. I guess, you know, very well. Couple of things, uh, Chief Griffin's not here, but I will go over a little bit with the fire services, if that's okay. I know he's talked with Ken, I believe, but uh, we're gonna definitely need a station in the north section of Pittsburgh soon. That's something that we need to uh. Be thinking about really soon. Um, getting through Pittsburgh is a nightmare to get to the north side of town. It's cut our response down terrible. Uh, salaries is another thing that we need to um. We start our firefighters off, this is firefighter one and two with EMT, emergency bit driving and hazmat. And most other municipalities just have to have firefighter one and EMT. And we're we're looking at somewhere, anywhere between six and as much as ten thousand dollars difference in local municipalities for start by.
I'll interject there also that uh, in speaking with Chief Griffin, the comparison with the. For instance, North Chatham, some of the other um. Local departments, there's, he mentioned despair. Those as well.
And then that's part of our budget too, you know, with Pittsburgh, you know, we're we're gonna have to work with that too, but. It may be a, an item that we may have to create some type of a salary adjustment in our budget.
Supplement, like how the county, county board supplements the school board? Something like that.
Do that, John, but yes, some, I mean.
They're just gonna have a month plus account.
Yeah, yeah. Cause that's, our needs are really uh, personnel in a, in a, up at Pittsburgh station up north. Off the town.
Thought you had that handled.
Fucking hell. Nothing is done to us in writing.
That's right, that's right.
Jay, um, you say very soon for that station north of town, what, I mean. It's very soon, one year, three years? As soon as.
Need to find, first, we need to purchase property, you know, and then move from there.
Kyle for a suggestion.
Sure.
Kyle for a suggestion.
Absolutely.
I think between now and July, we need to acquire the property. July to June, we need to do the 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 design. And then break some ground uh, next eighteen to twenty four months.
Personally, I don't know if Atlanta will be there in July if we don't act on it quick. And I'm working on that.
That's. I think realistically, that's what needs to happen, because once sewer gets in here.
Oh, yeah.
Plus, the fifty five oh one construction starts, that's really gonna hurt. Getting up that road uh, for calls.
And just one, Donald, since you mentioned the street scape, um. Numerous times we've had incidents where people have been parking in the compact parking with uh. F two fifties and extended beds and all I get a. Couple of my friends, mine, I have expressed the issue of getting a tri fire truck or rescue through Main Street where. People parked out in the road. I don't know if we could change that to motorcycle parking or. Anything else.
Or just have better signage?
They're gonna, they're gonna park there, cause this might be the only one available.
Allards, yeah, you just take up, you just remove them as parking options.
Wouldn't want to recommend that. Our downtown businesses, you know, and people, that's several.
Few people ruin it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, there will be, I think there will be a re-stripe project as part of the. DOT streetscape, so that may be, you know, that's an opportune time to. Consider redistributing space, whatever, whatever it might be.
And that is continued to be parallel parking, correct? I mean, uh. Excuse me. Diagonal parking.
Yeah, same as, so far, same as.
Talking about a nightmare.
Yeah, the, my understanding is it's just gonna be like a mill and fill pay pave with with new striping as of. They're not really doing anything to downtown, uh, which is. Why we're still looking at the scoping for for what the design services are. Cause initially, I thought they were supposed to be upgrading the intersection at Salisbury and Hillsborough. But now that seems to have fallen off. And I think we're gonna be in charge of. A lot more of the design costs than what we originally supposed to take. Uh, so we're, but but we're still waiting to figure all that out, um, and they're trying to find other options to to resolve the issue. I know that doesn't give you a whole lot, but.
Why does the downtown need to be milled and repaid?
It's too tall.
When we did our transmission line.
I think the pavement is too, too high, isn't it?
Oh, I I have no idea. I think they just wanted to put a fresh coat of asphalt down while they were coming through. When was the last time it was paved?
When we, they dug up transmission line, water line. Five years ago, maybe?
No, it was pre me. I think it was pre me. So I've been here for seven and a half years. It might have been just before I, I don't know if it was just before I came, but.
I know I wasn't, I did have downtown business in, so they did all that work at night.
Well, since we have clarification, I'll let you know.
A whole lot other than that. Herne Hill, water line, that we're working on, so.
Yeah, so you all have bid Herne Hill after the holidays. And there will be more to come on that.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Concerns?
Yes. So I think generally, I would like to see a little. Something easier to digest about our budget. I understand like the line by line is is what it is. But we can have some more like summary data around it or charts or things like that, um, which is easier for the public to. Sort of glance at and understand. Um, I mean, I think even the managers. Summary and and stuff like that, but. Whatever we can do to make it a little more information, more accessible there, um, and the details still, obviously, but. Not true, what we do there. Boy, boy, benefits, uh, one, one thing in terms of like planning for growth is a bond rating. And anything we need to prepare for that, I think we've already started on that a little bit, but like what that. Timeline and cost for a bond rating is.
You're gonna uh, put money in the budget for next year to do the financial analysis, which we'll need to to start that process. Is that correct? We were trying to fit it in the budget this year. But it, the price just came back, it just wasn't. Heather and I just couldn't do it, pulled the trigger on it.
Okay.
It's just too high.
Alright. I just thought of this recently, but. Like starting a capital project fund for land acquisition, because there's been, it seems like even recently, there's some stuff that's come up. Where it's like, it'd be nice to have that or that or, but we just don't. We don't have the resources to do it, and so not anything defined necessarily, but. Maybe it's something that comes up and it would be a good addition to a park or a connection for a park or something like that. Future, you know, town office needs or whatever. If we start putting some opportunity, property opportunity money away in a capital project fund. I don't know if we can do that just for.
I mean, you do have to have sort of um. Boundaries on a capital project, but those boundaries can change, they can be amended. So we just would want to do that. I mean, we do have, or we, like, we have money in. We have a parks and recreation project budget, and we have different projects within that budget. If we wanted to have a, an amount that was for land acquisition within that project, and then we had other project funds, that's another way to do it.
Okay.
As well.
So I wouldn't put it in a capital project fund, because then it's stuck in there forever.
Well, you can amend, I mean, you can.
You can amend it for something else, but you can never pull the money out if you need it for operations.
But I mean, just, just kind of conceptually that if, you know, if something came up and it was a. Piece of land, and I don't have anything in mind, I'm not saying, but like. You know, it'd be good to have a, to start building towards being able to react to stuff. As land gets just less and less available or expensive. I think at some point, we should look at leasing vehicles versus purchasing. Like there's some. Good things there.
We'll be having a conversation about that during the budget process.
Alright.
Yep.
It also expedites acquisition of the vehicles in some cases.
The issue is the construction of the vehicles.
And getting them.
Yes.
And the big leasing companies already own them.
Right, well, even they are not have, at least who we've talked to, I mean, they're not having an easier time. So at least for the vehicles that we want, um. Those that they're just not making though, right now.
We almost brought it to you in January.
Yeah.
And we, we just kind of.
We're just waiting till the budget's like.
We've been looking at that for the last three, four months. Uh, police will likely stay, we own them, just because of all the equipment and all that stuff that goes into it. But the other stuff, the other fleet vehicles, uh, lease problem makes a little bit of sense. Especially now that water and sewer is gonna be somewhere else.
Greenway and sidewalk interconnections, so we've got a lot of. You know, a lot of gaps right now, and I'd really like to prioritize filling those in, especially as we get better facilities and in new construction areas, and we know. You know, Town Park, obviously, but uh, Reeves Farm and sort of planning ahead for some of these connections to put more money. Towards making continuous connections as far as we can, Frost Town. The uh. Shuttle or or trolley service, I know we put in a grant for that, but whatever we might need to put in. Additional do or to support that or stops or anything. Think uh, agenda management. Us, our system now. Is functional for some of us, but um. Looking towards growth, so. It's easier for everyone, I think there. I think public communication generally, um, and I don't know what that is, uh, newsletter, signboards or electronic signs or. You know, social media ads or, you know, I don't know what that is, but just putting more resources towards that, because I'm. You know, I think we've seen a lot with like water quality. That even all of what we've done, I feel like we've hit every outlet. Colby's done everything he can twice. And you know, still have people that say, what about water quality? What's what's the deal with this? You know, just in any way we can. Improve communication. I don't know what that is, but just putting more, putting more money towards it for now. Uh, and I think. Not many comments on the enterprise fund, of course, but. A lot of our expenses now are, or you know, some of our expenses are funded by the enterprise fund, which will come back. So obviously, you know, you guys have to deal with the categories there, but um, you know, how that's gonna affect us in the short term as we transition. And then some other things about that, like. Uh, one thing I thought of was upsizing of utility lines, like if, you know, a project is doing something and like. If there's anything that we're still gonna want to have some. Utility type funds for need for. With like up, upsizing specifically, that might fall on uh, Sanford to do, but just if if there's going to be any of those type of things. Opportunity costs for us related to utilities or or projects or things that we. Think about what those, what those might be. Overall, I'm excited about not having that impression, but. Oh, and I guess uh, another one is probably a study like we're doing for the fire service for the police service of not just. Renovating, you know, into something workable, but where is our second, third, fourth fire station? Or sorry, police station um, and and needs there.
I just got him happy with one. Hey, how is there in two and three?
I I mean, it's it's a longer term thing of like, you know, when, when do we buy our second ladder truck? When do we, but you know, some of these other bigger expenses. You know, what's our ten-year plan for a town hall and. Stuff like that. I mean, I don't know if that's studies now, I hate to spend on studies, but we also need to have a plan for. For that stuff. I think we have a much clearer picture, maybe even as of today, of what our growth pattern looks like. And um. It's coming quick.
Yeah, so. Well, I mean, most of what we're gonna be doing over the next year is it's planning. So let's do that. If we're deciding what neighborhoods look like, well, it's decide where the police, the police station or the other, the auxiliary station goes and compares or contrast or whatever. That makes sense.
And I know it's, it's. Quasi-related to our budget, but um, ABC, like what we're going to see from ABC revenues, if that's. Increasing or changing, and then also what their growth plans look like, and I don't know if it's gonna go to a new. Second location or something like that, but.
Yeah, they'll uh. They've got a present or will present some information to you on Monday. Some of that will be covered. But I would, when they do, I would ask a couple of those questions of them for the next update.
Yeah.
That way they can provide it to you.
Alright. We think additional? Mission bonnets?
Yes, 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 so um, a lot of familiar themes, um. Thank you, Kyle, um, for stealing my thunder on a couple of items, but. Uh, we're all singing the same tune about affordable housing, I think. And um. While I'm, I'm. Counting our blessings that the announcement at ten AM this morning about the. Disney um. Imagineered uh, real estate development, the project, residential project is is definitely gonna. Put a real spotlight on Pittsburgh. It's um, as commissionership pointed out in conversation, it's quite likely to attract a lot more attention. And um, probably accelerate our gentrification, um. People being priced out. Property values increasing despite perhaps the lack of. Continued investment, you know, through, to no changes of their, no, to no fault of the property homeowner. They're gonna see their taxes increase, even though we're not changing our tax rate. And so I think that the uh, affordable housing crisis is gonna. Get worse. And um, again, I'm I'm focusing on the positives, but I think we need to be mindful. That it's gonna get worse, and so. I guess, yeah, I guess I'll I'll say I'm I'm open hearing from staff. Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll say I'm, I'm open hearing from staff about proposals to increase. Portion of our budget that goes towards affordable housing. Uh, and leave it to y'all to figure out how that, how that happens, but. Perhaps it's just creative things like uh, staff and investing in, in training time, think. Think differently. Uh, about how to integrate that into our policies. Um. Or I don't know what, but. Uh, just uh, very much feeling that, that pressure. Another item that is pretty old from our budget and I, I don't remember hearing about it, Heather, we. In prior years had discussed having a, a new position under your operation or perhaps under the manager. Or the assistant manager that would be an, an independent function for. Some division of labor within finance. Um, where is that?
Uh, well, I mean, I guess I don't remember. Having a discussion about that particular type of position, um, so we do have um, Lisa Howe, who is our accounting specialist. Um, and she is providing some additional, you know, backup and you will see an item in the agenda on, for the Monday meeting. We're designating her as a deputy finance officer, so she will be my backup for checks um, and purchase orders. Um, and so um, we have that position. Um, I think at some point in the future, I don't know if it's going to be in this budget or not, I mean. There will be an additional finance position, whether that is a person that is designated. As the deputy finance officer, I don't know, um. But that's, I mean, but Lisa right now is providing some of that um. Sort of separation of duties and, and a backup to me, so.
I remember some discussion about that, it was like an audit comment, not an audit finding, but an audit comment about.
Yeah, it definitely wasn't a finding, but I mean, to.
Checks.
It's, it's, yeah, so I mean, because that's a. In a small.
Right.
Municipality, that's a problem for all of them, so we're trying to make sure that we have those checks and balances.
Yeah, separation of duties.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, that's a comment in most small town.
Yeah.
But so I think the thing is just when, when do we get to the point where we.
Yeah.
Need that addition.
Right, and so the, what we're trying to balance is the, is the balancing of um. Some of our employees' duties changing when, whenever we do hand over everything to Sanford, and again, we don't know the exact. Cause I don't think it's, I, I think we're still going to be doing some stuff under a contract basis after June 30th, but we don't know for sure. Um, and so if we're doing um. Whenever that happens, then that's going to free up some. Additional time and, and I don't want to necessarily hire somebody that we then don't need. So it's just, it's, we're trying to balance that.
Thank you.
Yep.
The next one may be procurement. Yeah, I think that's where, where we could use the help. But.
Um, I'm eager to hear thoughts about how we can make uh. The system of. Citizens or business owners or visitors reporting things like work orders or, or. Signs down or. Street lights out, now that's Duke energy, um, but uh, more customer friendly work order system. And um. Alan Wilson, I think, described this as a 311 system and I hadn't previously heard of it as that, but. Uh, I think other municipalities have that. Kind of a, a system that's. Um. Speeds up and perhaps enhances accountability for, for quarters that have been filed. Um, perhaps in also simultaneously increases communication back to. The citizen or business owner who. File the request. Um, I don't know, but. It's kind of in the same category in my mind as like an agenda management package is this kind of. Administrative uh, tool that would um. Increase the public's uh, confidence and satisfaction. In our work.
Mm-hmm.
Staff's work.
Well, and that kind of falls, I mean, to me it falls maybe more under the public communication that Kyle brought up as well.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I've seen some of those, like, there's, there's facts, so if you can take pictures and think, I think the thing for us to. Recognize with our size is that takes. Management response.
Mm-hmm.
To it.
Yeah. Yeah. But it may, it may make it easier for staff.
We have it on the website already, don't we?
There's some functionality that we.
Oh, okay, I thought we had a filling form on the website that.
No, we, we have something for a, uh, we developed something for this discharge.
Yeah, so we, we, we do have a form that you can fill out if you find a list of discharge, uh, we don't have anything like a pop over downside. We had demoed a few things. Spot on about the administrative size. You know, just have to train or hire somebody just to run the administrative side of it to make the system work.
Hmm.
That's why we didn't pursue it at, at that time.
We do have one.
My main focus is initially just having a human being answer the phone. Every hour that we're open. And I think from there, if, if we find that we're not serving a particular group of, of our citizens that way, then. We can look at something else. Uh. I've, I've gotten pretty good response back from folks just happy that when they call town hall or the main street building. Uh. And a person answers. So.
Okay. Good, thank you. Um, to Kyle's point about greenways and sidewalk interconnections, increasing that connectivity and focusing on that. Uh, I mean, we, we talked about that a lot in the. Uh, pedestrian connectivity work session, um, but I would add to that, uh, the. Concerns about crosswalks. We've seen a lot of really wonderful improvement there in recent months. Frost Town. Very grateful for that. I'm curious, is that coming out of B I L funding?
What's that?
The bipartisan infrastructure law.
Oh.
Couple of years ago.
Powell bill.
Just Powell bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe it was increased, maybe Powell bill was increased through the B I L.
It has been increased, I'm not sure if it's linked to that, though, it, the last two years, we have gotten an increased percentage, they've increased, well, they've increased the total of the fund that. Gets pooled, so um, but I'm not sure if it's coming from that.
Yeah. Tom Tillis is claiming it as that.
Oh.
Senator Tillis, I just, just got a missive last night. Um. Yeah, definitely, I second the agenda management idea, um. Uh. Again, mostly for uh. Im- improving the ease of the public's perception of our work. Um, you know, I think most of us on the board are feeling more comfortable now with the. The workflow of documents, um, if it can be improved, that's always better, but. Uh, still hear a lot of concerns from the public. About timing of posts and. Sharing of documents and trying to follow things uh, through the, the course of staff work. Uh, thanks also, Kyle, for mentioning improved communications because I, I think. It, it is evident that Colby is working really hard on it and, and yet we're. Not seeing the results. Uh, in the public with regard to. News about water, news about the water filter, um. Uh, other news items, uh, the newspaper is no longer serving our. Our community, in my opinion. Um, so. Yeah, just whatever creative clever ideas we can come up with, I think that's. It'd be great. Um. Over many years, we've talked about having uh, dedicated staffing for grant seeking. And Jonathan, I recognize that we've turned increasingly to the. Cog. Uh, formerly known as Triangle J Council of Governments and now. Is the Central Pines. Um. Was it Central Pines Council, Central Pines?
Central Pines Council of Governments.
Um. But I think there's such immense value in having in-house uh, grant. Seeking grant application staff. That I. I uh. Want to elevate that idea. Um. We haven't. Ever really had uh. Cohesive capital improvement plan, and I think that that's a part of the strategic.
Was that mentioned in the strategic plan or Jonathan, maybe we've discussed it that.
I understand that it's in the works. Uh. Uh, but to, to the points that Commissioner Farrell and Commissionership have made about uh, fire and police long term. Uh. And. I expect there's a, a much longer list, uh. We've even talked about. The um. Uh, public works facilities and Jonathan yours and Katie's idea of co-locating those for a time. Um, at the new parks facility on Park, on Pittsboro, Moncur Road. Um. But uh, it'd be good to start seeing, you know, like a, a 10 year timeframe on. Uh. When, what and when. Uh, and I think unlike Chatham County and perhaps other municipality, other local governments. We're probably in a better position to be able to make those kinds of projections because of the benefit of. Uh, the largest planned development in the state in, in our backyard. Uh, and while there's a lot of uncertainty still to that. Um. Perhaps the most recent projections, Heather, that you've received from them for. This is about a year ago. Like we were in those conversations where you were. Asking them for those projections for the purposes of. Um, utility planning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think there's still a lot of capital improvement we're going to be faced with over the next decade. Uh, outside of utility. And it'd be really great to start putting that into paper documents. Um. And. Um. I'd really like to see us dedicate a small amount of money, and I think this may even be more of a board initiative. Uh, for staff to attend. Trainings, perhaps even with our local organization, uh, Chatham Organizing for Racial Equity. Um. Uh. Think we, we as society. Uh, are still grappling with questions of race and. Um, as the demographics of this country change. Uh, I think it's, it's um, only appropriate that we. Um. Work to enlighten ourselves. And educate ourselves. And I'm striving to do that and um. I hope that staff can also. Be supported in that. Financially. Uh, and that local organization is C O R E. Um. This is a, a theme that I've hit on before, but um, I believe that there are a good number of documents that I hope that are still. In possession uh, within the town. Uh, before 20, 2018 and on our website, we only have those documents really up through 2018. And um. If it requires uh, budgetary appropriation. Or, or. Allocation, um, I think it's important that we. Get some of those early documents uh, published. Um. And that goes to questions of transparency. Um. We've talked also about uh, the Tree City status and there's been a, a lot of. Uh, people who've recently asked me about that. And um. I think that we have a. Now almost perhaps it is permanent line item. For tree maintenance in our budget. True?
Uh, well, I mean, it's been in there for this year and last year, yes. Um, so I don't thi- I can't, I don't think we necessarily can say any line item is. Maybe aside from salaries, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
But yes, I mean, we're trying to set that precedence.
Good.
Have that.
Good, yeah, so we've got at least that much and I'd like to see it in there again. Some amount, whatever the amount is necessary to continue. At least leaving the door open to uh. Establishing ourselves as a tree city.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And. The reason is that. As people drive into Pittsburgh, I think it's not just the, the historic buildings in our, our. Beautiful downtown area that's, that's so attractive, but uh, the tree canopy. Is a big part of that, I call it natural infrastructure. Um. But we're, we're going to one day need to think about paying to maintain it. And um. Uh, nurture it and replant it. Um. So, yeah, I, I support continuation of that line item in the budget for sure. Um, and I hope that we can. Uh. Work together to. Perhaps even submit an application for Tree City USA. In the coming year. Um. Last item, and it's not for lack of importance, um. I hope that we'll continue to look at electrification of our vehicle fleet. And uh. Again, any situation where we can save money. Uh, through grants or through technology that's more energy efficient. Uh. I strongly support that, uh, even in cases where the capital expense is, is higher upfront. Uh, if there are lower costs of operation and maintenance. Uh. Or clear savings of total cost of operation. Um. Uh, I'm hugely supportive. So those are. Those are some high level things. Thanks for.
Let me share.
Yeah.
Thanks for the list.
Commissioner Voss. Have any thing to add?
I support everything we're talking.
Oh, right. Sounds wonderful.
Skate park.
Yeah, skate park. There you go.
Actually, our, when we, when we. Put out the RFQ, hopefully we're going to put it out first between. Design services for the Moncur Pittsburgh Park, which we also have to put in, and RFQ will be helping us find a name. We'll go through hopefully the same process that we went through for Night Farm, because we expect that we'll get a lot of community input on. You know, information that's helpful with that. But one of the thoughts was put the skate park there and just go ahead and build that into the design and uh, for all the other stuff that's. We can fit in that part, so that's our current plan. Um. And then we can build a small one somewhere else that's kind of a starter skate park, but build the big one that I know you must. The Apex visit uh, at that location.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, concerns from any commissioners? Have any additional things to add? I've already said the ones that I had at the beginning, so basically I do. I do agree with a lot of those which were stated and I do look forward to your responses to those. So if there's anything else.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned skate park, uh. And I really do hope that we do something, uh, perhaps temporary, um, in low budget. Perhaps. Um, at the site that has been designated and historically been discussed as skate park. Um. And uh. Yeah, I, I still hope that we'll see a proposal for that. Not just. A proposal that we're going to have that in the design of the Moncur. For Moncur Road Park, but. Um. That's, that's a longstanding commitment, longstanding promise. And a whole bunch of people. That's, that's a longstanding commitment, longstanding promise, and a whole bunch of people continue to ask about it. So. McLanahan Street.
I think Mayor Protim has a couple of comments on some themes that have been discussed. Uh, I think on the affordable housing, I think it's. Um, important to keep in that consideration the the maintenance, I think we have. And there's a natural, you know, focus, the heavy lift on developing, uh, which is important. But I drive around town and I see what I would project or affordable housing units that maybe are. A deteriorating or maybe a home control, you know, having a difficult time taming those. So, I don't know. That's not a proposal. I don't know what we would do, but just, you know, a thought there. Um, and then I think as far as the merger, I think it's gonna be interesting. Uh, you know, there's some other um entities. Um, in particular, uh, Siler City that are considering similar approaches as to what we have taken in this past year. And so if if those um materialize, I think it'll be interesting to see how that impacts the the merger and what uh. You know, form or fashion that may take, it may not have a direct impact uh on us, uh, but maybe indirectly.
And thank you. Those are, those are helpful comments and and I'll uh respond, amplify what you're saying, uh, your hopes. Uh, about affordable housing. Um, rebuilding together, if the triangle comes to mind. Uh, and and maybe that's, that's a way that we can start sticking a toe in the water as is uh. Discussing with them what they might need to increase their activities inside our town limits. Um, because there certainly is a a significant amount of naturally occurring affordable housing or previously occurring affordable housing that. Maybe, as I described, uh, getting priced out because of uh. Just the natural tendency of property values to increase. Um, and if we can do anything to help those people stay in their houses or keep those houses. Safe and healthy, or maybe improve the healthiness of those houses. Uh, that would be very, very satisfying, I think.
Well, basically, in reference to some of the affordable housing deteriorating, they they AHA. Has a grant program that individuals can apply for to actually um. Renovate some of their homes, and that might be something Pittsburgh can sort of reiterate. On our website that that is an option, that those landowners can certainly apply for a grant through AHA. I mean, they do great, when I say they do great work, that those individuals that we, I'm no longer on that though. But that we had given those funds to, they do great work, and they uh all over the county. So it may be that a lot of times people are not aware of that type of money that they can receive. So it may be good just to reiterate that on our website, so that individuals, landho- landowners. And landlords can look to see that, oh, this is something that we can apply for and get it. And you don't have to pay it back.
And rebuilding together is typically a receiver of those funds.
They are. Mm-hmm. But thank you for bringing that up.
I'll just mention one more item that I also did have a skate park right down in Hillmind. Um, I would like to see if we could do such. Small venture on McLanahan Street, the property is there. I don't, I wouldn't want to spend a lot of money on it, but uh. It's, it might be a possibility. I don't know. We need to get it fully engineered and all like this, but. Could be a possibility to uh get it cleared and get small skate park there for a start. Um, we do have volunteers that have already done and donated numerous amount of monies, ready to go. Um, the other one was the, last year, we we marked this off the uh, was the gravel truck. For the Public Works, we're getting a lot of limbs and debris and trees. Getting in old Pittsburgh, I call it Pittsburgh, downtown area and the, not into new developments, but. One of those possibly trucks, if we could get a used one or something like that.
Uh, knuckle boom?
Yeah, gravel.
Yeah.
Graffle. I thought you said gravel truck.
Gravel, gravel. I call it gravel.
Graffle, graffle.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz.
Knuckle boom.
Boom, yeah.
Yeah.
They're uh, probably about two fifty now, I guess. Um. Then get a little hairy and like southwest Salisbury, it's no side streets, that's gonna be a problem. Um.
Got the power lines.
Yeah, and just how near the streets are when she started. Yeah, this thing's making me a little nervous uh from an operational standpoint. The, but I think there's a lot of other things we can talk about. In terms of curbside pickup. Yeah, I know we've got options with GFL, that contract's coming up. Um.
No more trash cans.
Uh, and 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 of course, recycling and trash is gonna be a continuing discussion because uh. Pittsburgh is increasing its recycling ten percent year over year, but recycling costs fifty percent more. So, those costs will have to continue to be passed on to the customer via the tax bill. Um. I know my recycling dump can fills up twice as fast as my trash, but my trash gets emptied twice as much. So. Hmm, halfway through the week, I just start throwing the recycling in the trash because I ain't got else to put it. Uh, so. That's, there's more discussion to be had, I think, about that than. The other thing, these, these high-density neighborhoods that are being designed and eventually built, there's not gonna be as much of a need for that type of service.
Right.
Um, I, like my house in Lewisburg, I had stuff out every week. Here, I don't, there's, I don't have a yard to have stuff, so it's uh.
Mm-hmm.
I I think that's gonna be a change in service as well, uh, just based on the type of housing that's being built. Um. But uh, yeah, our Public Works Director is highly capable. If he thinks we need one, then then uh we'll go that route.
But you are currently picking up those limbs and different things like that.
Oh, yeah.
Manually.
And the white, and you, I did ask you about the, what they used to call the white products, you know?
White goods.
Yes, the white goods, so.
Be that's in January or February, we're looking at that on the agenda, have a update or a feast.
Okay.
I wanted to do it for free, but Heather won't let me, so she wants to assign it. But that is something we do need to do. That is, that is a classic.
It costs us, it costs us a lot of money to get rid of that stuff.
Yeah, that, I mean, white goods and curbside pickup, you're already great. I mean, that's just a classic municipal service. Uh, so we just gotta figure out how to do that and. Do it within the current financials.
Yeah.
In terms of the skate park, I think I've heard three. Um, I'm asking for a vote, but some nods or something. Because that's, if we're gonna redo McLanahan in terms of side or the tennis courts and basketball courts, if we want to build a small skate park. Now, really now is the time to decide.
I think we did have a vote. Y'all refresh me if I'm wrong, but I think we had a vote during one of the two interim, interim managers. Uh, times. Um.
No, I don't.
I had a vote.
But we did have some representatives from the uh.
Yeah.
Volunteers from the.
Okay.
I, I think if we, I, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of a larger skate park. Skate park, even probably larger than was imagined at McLanahan Street. Um, I think from a timing and from an interest perspective. Like, maybe we could take, um, I don't know, like, level of equipment that we need, whatever, we could put a half pipe or some stuff. On one of the basketball courts at McLanahan Street after we redo it, or maybe redo that surface differently. Um, and we talked about the other board too, maybe use half for that interactive board and half for some skate park equipment. That wouldn't necessarily have to be planned to last for twenty years. It could last for a shorter number of years while we work on another, you know, put some type of facility there. Um, to a- address the need, check entrance, drive it, drive interest. Um, do it relatively quickly, but in a pop-up park.
Yep.
Style way while we do something else.
Yeah, because I, you could put in a half pipe on one end, put a, a box in the middle, and then you could mount. One of those like curved grind rails on the other end, and you could probably do that in between the basketball court and that, I don't know what that road name is. Um.
It's wrong.
I am. Um.
The one end.
Yeah, the one way, I guess the one way.
Yeah.
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 McLanahan.
Okay, so you could probably put.
That's what the park is named after.
Right. I don't have to do here. You can probably fit that in, but as myself and Katie and the rest or the Sutu wall, uh, we were out there Monday morning. And I was kind of questioning myself, do we need free basketball courts? Um, I think staff was under the impression that anything that we do out there requires us to put in bathrooms per the county agreement. Paul reviewed that agreement, and he said that's not the case. So, there is. That's, I was.
Is there enough?
That makes a huge deal.
Yeah, that's a.
Yeah, I don't have to go build a bathroom to put a skate park up. That makes this a lot easier to do financially, especially if I've got a group that's gonna donate ninety thousand dollars. Um, so that just came to light Tuesday morning.
But what I wonder if we could take, you know, twenty-five thousand of what they've committed and put equipment out there and have a skate park. Have a skate area soon.
Yeah.
While we work on a bigger fundraising plan and a bigger design and all that stuff for.
I mean, you, you're gonna want your skate park concrete.
Yeah.
Um, and then.
But we can. Future skate park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is that enough, is that enough area to build a temporary skate park?
Yeah.
I, it's one that I've looked at over in Chapel Hill. At this, at Southern Village, and they have a nice, very nice skate. It's not really large. But I didn't, I don't know if this is enough room to build one at that McLanahan Park.
Well, I think it's.
There is.
It, it, I don't think it's the finished goal, but if we put a, I don't exactly know how big a half pipe is either, but if we put a half pipe, it's. Hundred percent more equipment than we have right now. So, you know, I think there's some opportunity to put some equipment there. And really, with the resourcing of McLanahan, it changed it a lot. Instead of just tennis and basketball, we could have tennis. What's that one everybody likes? Pickleball, uh, basketball, some skate equipment and a Sutu wall, and there'd be a lot more opportunity in that park for less.
It's a Sutu wall. I'm sorry.
I don't know what that is. That's the large digital cubes, and then you can throw baseballs at it, softballs, you can kick soccer balls at it, you can hit hockey pucks at it. And it will tell you your speed, and it will also do like an interactive game. So, it'll be like hit these two blocks, you kick your soccer ball at it. There's another one we're looking at that's actually, it's, it's kind of like an octagon, but it's got four digital goals, and so four kids can go in. And let's say you're blue and I'm yellow, well, the goals will change colors as you're playing. So your blue goal may be here, and then halfway through the game, it'll switch, and then it'll switch. Um, it's kind of bringing technology into recreation a bit. We're getting one of those priced for McLanahan because the, um, and I hate saying this, but the uh, we came in under budget. For what we were meaning to do, and so we were gonna try to add some stuff to it to improve the, the overall park. Um. If, when in, in Lewisburg, we had a skate park, probably the size over to the wall. That, that rectangle, it was two, two tiers, had a half pipe, couple grind rails, couple boxes. And I ended up turning, it never got used, so I turned half of it into a pickleball court. And then, of course, as soon as we did that, then the skater showed up. Um, but it was really only half of it ever got used. So I think we've got plenty of space out there to do a. Let's call a skater and training park um and kind of get the ball rolling. Because all, all you're really looking at is a concrete pad and a couple pieces of equipment. Uh, I think that would be, I think that would be appropriate too, how close you know, the elementary school. But you're not gonna have sixteen-year-old down there using this, the equipment we would put in there. This would be more younger kids that are just learning how to skate. Or electric scooters or whatever else they got that they're personal out there.
That sounds good.
The big one, the big one would be a lot different. I mean, if you were to build a skate park, you really should build a skate park. Um. Like what you see out in California or something.
So Jonathan, I'm remembering now, I think if you were not present for this meeting, it was February twenty-seventh, looking back at my, my notes. And uh, uh, there is a nonprofit organization, which is now five oh one C three. Uh, which has accumulated uh, but eighty-five thousand dollars uh in donations. And um, uh, an additional donor is willing to go from there up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, for contribution to the original site. Um, now, that was assuming that the, they're assuming that the town would pitch in. Commissioner Baldwin, you commented on February twenty-seventh that your recollection was that uh, the group was supposed to raise two hundred thousand towards a four hundred thousand dollar project. And uh, at least that was as of twenty twelve.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Katie did a very thorough uh report on all of the historical documentation. Unfortunately, what wasn't present in the documentation was um, that the, there was a clear understanding that we were going to do this. Um, and so my notes say, as of February twenty-seventh, we agreed by consensus. That we support the project and it should be worked on, worked into the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And Katie would work with citizens to review current costs in order to have an action plan for this budget we're discussing. That's what I meant when I said I hope that there will be an actual proposal uh from Katie. So, um. It's uh, it's, it's long been promised, and we, we shouldn't neglect it by simply saying we're gonna do something out of Pittsburgh Moncur Park. Thanks for hearing us.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I think a skate park is something that the town should look into and build. But if the, if the agreement was fifty percent of a four hundred thousand dollar project, they're, they're not there.
That's right.
Nor can you build what they won't, or what I would imagine they would want for four hundred. You're not gonna build that now for four hundred. You might not build it for eight hundred. Um, so I think if that group is willing to be flexible and let's do something small now. With the understanding that it will be in the next, let's say, park uh planning process. Uh, and I think that's something we can do pretty fairly quickly, considering literally we have contracts on Katie's desk, uh, we're waiting to execute for uh McLanahan. Which are under budget, so we've got, we've got money that we can be flexible with.
Right.
Which is why we were looking at these other options. So, um, if I can move forward under. That direction, I'm happy to do so. Uh, but moving forward, trying to build a major skate park for eight hundred and some change. That ain't, that's just, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah. Now, my hope and expectation was that it was gonna be phases, something low budget and temporary.
Yeah.
And then a final, much more grand.
First, I still think McLanahan's big enough.
Yeah.
It's just not.
Yeah.
Um, you'd have to wipe the, you'd have to completely get rid of the, the basketball. I don't think you'd even do that.
Well, have a look at the drawings that the nonprofit commission, okay?
They, they showed it outside of the basketball area, but I mean, I think that we, we've got a lot more looking to do there in light of the. The school board property, the sheriff's property.
Yeah.
Like, there, there's a lot.
Lot more, yes, a lot more uh envisioning and um, maybe even a charrette process to. Get stakeholders into the room and put ideas on the wall and start talking through.
Uh, yeah, I think that'll all be part of that whole parcel, but that, that's another reason to not do more major things at McLanahan, right?
Yes, agreed.
Because Dan and I have already, the county manager, have already worked or already discussed with school of government, DFI.
Yeah.
To do the study for the county property. Uh, Dan even mentioned it this morning at the EDC meeting. Uh, so. School of Government's ready to get us a contract. Um, we can go ahead and budget that money and plan for that for, I think, July of this, of next year. Uh, they'll get started on that, that study. Um, so that's, that's kind of, that's already in the works.
Any additional comments, questions?
Okay, he's lying.
Yeah. Uh, Jonathan, how much land do we have behind the community building? How far does our property line go by that?
Pretty much, you, you know where that shed is?
Yeah.
Down, right before that shed.
Okay.
Yeah, because I was hoping that shed. Cause I was hoping that shed was ours so we could fix it, but it's not ours.
That shed is not on the town property there?
The, the shed is, but not the, not the metal building.
Yeah, the public, the public.
Like the lawnmower shed, new, that's us, sorry, which is, that's being moved, by the way. And then, but the, the shed that's falling down behind that shed, that is not ours. And that, we are fully under construction over there, ceiling's been pulled out, already discovering lots of fun problems. Lots of fun changes, so. We're coming out.
Any additional comments, concerns, questions? Commissioner-elect Foley.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. If not, then I will call for an adjournment.
Don't move.
All in favor? Thank you all so much.